Good evening. Tonight is Monday, February 14th, and we do have a quorum, so I will call this meeting to order. Happy Valentine's Day to everyone here and at home, and it is also Val Burke's birthday today. So one of our special cabinet members. Happy birthday, Val. So you get double pleasure being here on your birthday and Valentine's Day. Yes, yes. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second? We will now vote to approve the agenda for the evening. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The agenda is approved. Dr. Stanley, will you please review tonight's agenda for us?
Absolutely, Chair Ellenberg. So this evening, we have excellence in action, and our students from Highlands are here. We're so excited to hear from them. Of course, we will have hearing from members of the public. We have a consent agenda there, but we have discussion of some policies, 425, 522, 613. We are going to move into action on the COVID update and recommendations that we spoke about during work session. Get information regarding our revised 2021, 2022 budget, our data metrics plan that we looked at a couple of months ago, and the proposal to include additional special education classroom space that we talked about at our last meeting. Of course, we'll have leadership and then committee updates. I'll provide updates. And we have some staff celebrations that we want to honor as well tonight.
Tonight, first, we're going to start with our excellence in action, and we have Highlands elementary students here in Dr. Carla Rickenberg's fourth and fifth grade CP class, and they've actively participated in the Minnesota Zoo's Zoom STEM Design Challenge. So students have completed a three-month, fully-integrated unit of study to understand exhibit design. They researched, observed, collected data, measured, wrote, collaborated, and created. The end product was a 3D model of a new exhibit for the wolves at the Minnesota Zoo, a completed research paper, and a tri-fold board showcasing learning and collaboration. Here to tell us more is Highlands Principal Katie Mahoney. Good evening, Principal Mahoney.
Hi, everyone.
Hello. Hi, students.
So we have some amazing fourth and fifth graders who are here from Highlands to talk to you about their STEM project that they have been working on for a very long time. So I'm going to hand the mic over to Dr. Rickenberg, who is here with them to help us present.
Thank you. I am thrilled to be here with the students because it's the students who have been doing all of the work. And so I'm thankful that the parents were able to bring this group of awesome kiddos here. And so they're actually going to be doing the presentation tonight. We have some different slides with pictures because we couldn't bring all of the work in that we've been doing. And so if we, where do I look for the slides? Up on the monitors? There they are. Okay. So here, you're first.
Can we make sure that the mic is turned on?
Yes. Well, Mom said it was, so. There's of course a little button on this mic, on the one mic, there's a button right there.
There. There you go. The Minnesota Zoo's Zoom STEM Design Challenge is giving us the chance to develop a situation to a real problem that the zoo is experiencing.
One problem that we had, that we helped to solve, was creating a new exhibit area for the gray wolves habitat. We had to consider the needs for not only the wolves, but also the Minnesota Zoo staffs and the visitors.
After we learned about the challenge, we voted as a class to do the exhibit design challenge instead of the enrichment design challenge. It was a tough assignment, but we were up for the challenge. We had a lot to consider. With the exhibit design, how could we make the visitors better interact with the wolves? How could the exhibit be designed to be easily cleaned? How could a training area be incorporated into the design?
You can change the slide.
The first step in the whole process was research. We read a lot of books and watched a few videos to get us familiar with the gray wolves as an animal, but also more specifically, the gray wolves at the Minnesota Zoo.
You can change the slide.
Of course, we didn't design a new exhibit for the zoo if we didn't have a chance to see the current exhibit and the study of the wolves. We spent a few hours in December making observations and collective data.
So if you go to the next slide, it's a video of the students when we arrived. Maybe it didn't make it into this final one. But the students, when we first arrived right at the zoo, we went straight to the wolf exhibit, and the students right away started howling because we've been talking about the communication. And so Ask her go ahead with this next slide.
We studied different habitats, looking for the evidence that the exhibit was built for the animal, zookeeper, and visitor. We participated in class with the zoo staff to learn about exhibit requirements.
So you can click to the next slide, and there's us participating in the class with the zoo staff. And then you can click to the next slide, and Estella will talk to us about more research.
And we did more research. We had to take all the data. We collected all and created questions that could be researched.
At the same time we were doing the research, we also had to learn how to draw maps and scale models. So he's not going to hold you in a study on geography, learning map skills and map making.
We flexed our creativity and designed our very own islands to scale with many natural features. This important activity helped lay the foundation on how to draw a blueprint.
A next step for the Minnesota Zoo STEM project was to create a blueprint of our exhibit design. We took into consideration all the needs of the wolves, zookeepers, and visitors as a team.
You can see that the zoo provided us with some sketches, but we had to really focus in on what was important for the three stakeholders. We didn't do just one draft either. Many of us had at least two different drafts, and with some teams having more.
As we worked on more research, we also worked on creating the final draft for the blueprint so we could start creating our 3D model.
Once the blueprint was finalized, we had to keep our creativity going and create a 3D model based upon the blueprint we created. We learned a lot about representation, and that a tree in our model doesn't necessarily have to look like a tree we see out our window.
Here are, okay, okay. Here are some additional pictures of our 3D model creating. The next part of the Minnesota Zoo Zoom STEM project was creating a tri-fold to showcase all our research and blueprints and 3D model.
This video shows us working on the tri-fold in our teams.
Yep, you can show this video.
We made sure the project.
It's a magical moment in the classroom for the teacher when everybody's doing exactly what they're supposed to be doing. So I had to capture it on film. You can go ahead and click to the next slide. Thank you.
We made sure that the project met all the requirements asked from the Minnesota Zoo. This was our guiding document the whole time.
In the beginning of the project, we knew that the Minnesota Zoo was having a competition with all the participating schools, so we voted to participate in the competition. About midway in the project, we had a reset on the importance of learning the project and had a revote on whether to participate in the competition. In the end, we decided it was important to have Highlands represented in the zoo competition. We appreciated the guests who came into our room to interview the groups and judge the final projects.
Here are all the teams with their finished project, project up there.
Even after the projects were finished, we weren't finished learning. A week after our projects were done, we all finished our research papers and had an author celebration, leaving feedback for one another.
And then our next slide is a video because all of the students couldn't be here. We wanted to make sure they could all be represented, because this was a big deal. This took us about four months to do. We started in November and just finished it up two weeks ago. So it's a big content integrated. So go ahead and show the video, and this is the students answering the questions of what I learned and what I liked best.
My favorite part was probably making the 3D models, and I really also liked working as a team. I learned a lot, I also learned a bunch of stuff, but I learned a lot of facts. And I also learned that my ideas aren't always the best for the group, and I need to accept that.
The thing about the Wolf Project is teamwork. It was really fun. You didn't have to do a lot of work. You could always have some ideas. You can use others' ideas.
I really liked the research because wolves have always been like a super cool topic for me. So to learn more about them, that was really fun.
My favorite part of the Wolf Project was all the teamwork, and something that I learned was that wolves can eat up to 20 pounds at once.
My favorite part of the Wolf Project was building the 3D model, and I learned a bunch of fun facts while I was doing it.
I learned a ton of things, like how wolves can eat 20 pounds of meat.
They have 42 teeth that are about two and a half inches long, another joke.
My favorite part about the Wolf Project was building the exhibit, and something I learned was probably how to work better as a team.
My favorite part was working with my group, and I learned that everybody has ideas and that you need to include them.
The project was probably working together in a group.
About how they're endangered, and that's really important, important, because we need to save them.
What I learned was just like how we were all working together as a team, and you could really feel a strong bond of teamwork together, and that just made it more fun. What I learned was like teamwork comes a long way, and you can't have one kid slack off because they need you. Everybody needs your other team.
I'm in fifth grade. My favorite part of doing the Wolf Project was working together with my teammates. I learned that you don't always have to do your ideas.
Probably was the 3D models because you learned group work. It was fun. And you get all the stuff you would if you were just writing it down on.
What was the most important thing, do you think, about the Wolf Project?
Maybe like actually getting to design it for the Minnesota Zoo so it could actually.
My favorite part was building the 3D model, and I learned that it's hard to work together.
My favorite part was learning with others.
My favorite part was building the exhibit and going to the zoo and teaming the wolves.
The one thing I learned in this STEM project is that wolves only eat the sick of the week. And my favorite part about it was that going to the Minnesota Zoo to learn more about the wolves.
My favorite part of the project was building the 3D model, and I learned that the first things you do don't.
I learned that I could not have done this project without my team.
My favorite part was working with my group, and I learned that wolves are not bad.
My favorite part was going to the Minnesota Zoo.
My favorite thing about the Wolf Research was probably that we all got to work together and share our ideas. And one thing I learned is that everything that I don't, everything doesn't have to go my way.
My favorite part was learning these things about wolves.
My favorite thing I learned was that wolves can eat up to 20 pounds of meat, which is equivalent to 200 hot dogs.
One thing I liked about the Wolf Project was that we had to do like all of the subjects in more fun ways without really knowing it. Like, we did like math and like geometry without like really knowing it. And I learned a lot about like designing and like how to format your typing to make it look really professional, and like learned a lot about teamwork.
Do any of you have any questions for the students?
Okay, now I'm on. What was the one most interesting fact about wolves that surprised you in your learning? You guys knew everything about wolves?
Well, well, most of my life, well, I didn't know exactly everything about wolves. In fact, all I knew that they were basically like, I thought that they were like savage killers of people, but they aren't there. They're actually beautiful creatures, and they control the elk population because technically there was this, it was technically if you took the wolves out of the ecosystem, then there wouldn't be anything to eat the elk, and then they would overpopulate.
Thanks, buddy. There you go. Other questions that you might have? We did bring pieces. These are pieces from two of the different projects. We were fortunate to have our judges recommend two of our projects, two of our seven projects, to go on to the zoo competition, and we just heard last week that one of our projects was chosen out of the money to continue through the competition, and that is in March. So we will be working to polish it up and get it ready. Other questions you have for the students, though?
I don't have any questions, but I just wanted to thank you and thank all the students for coming here and being brave to talk to all of us. You all did a great job, and your projects look fascinating, so thank you very much.
Thank you for letting us come.
Absolutely. This was great. Can you let us know what happens in March?
Yes, yes, I will.
Good luck. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Good luck, guys. Thank you.
And thank you to all the parents that came, too. Yeah. I think they're probably clearing out. That's awesome. Okay, we're going to move on to our hearing from members of the public. I just want to remind everyone that pursuant to Board Policy 206, we ask that you try not to duplicate information that has been previously presented. If you have a complaint about individual employees, board members, or students in the district, please direct these comments to the appropriate site administrator, the superintendent, or submit them in writing to the board. The board typically does not respond to or have discussions on any issues presented, but questions raised during presentations will receive follow-up as directed by the board. And I would like to remind all speakers that your presentations are limited to three minutes. We have a display that, right there, that will let you know when your three minutes are up, so please finish at three minutes. Thank you. We have quite a few speakers tonight, so I will let the speaker know, and then the speaker that's up after that know, just so you know to come up or that you're on deck. Our first speaker is Paul Thompson, so welcome, Paul. And then after Paul is Sophia Seidelman. So welcome, Paul.
Thank you. Thank you so much for inviting us and for the work that you do, and Happy Valentine's Day. I never thought I would learn so much about wolves by coming to a school board meeting, but it's exciting to be in a room with parents and kids and teachers and school board members. The work that you do is so important, and I know there's some hot topics that you're dealing with right now with masks and with COVID. The next big hot topic is climate change. Edina has just become one of over 20 cities in Minnesota to announce a climate emergency declaration. They also passed a climate action plan, which you have in your packet, some ideas. They also passed a climate action plan, which you have in your packet, some ideas. We're working with Grace Hancock, the city sustainability manager, and working towards neighborhoods, with schools, with faith communities, to get the word out that this is, the next nine years is going to be a crucial period for us to make, to lower our greenhouse gases and bring the community together in an inclusive, diverse way of dealing with these issues. And we want the school board to be fully on board. You are the biggest energy user in the, in the, in the city. So tonight, it's my pleasure as the volunteer Project Earth advisor with my wife, Mindy Aller. Been working with them for 15 years. We have students, both current students and former students, that are now coming back into the community to help us. So I'd like to invite Sophia Settleman.
Hi, my name is Sophia Settleman and I'm a junior at Edina High School. I'm representing the Project Green Challenge as well as Project Earth. But also representing over 100 students at Edina High School who have signed a petition requesting that our school no longer uses Styrofoam. In school cafeterias, there were once compostable trays, but now Styrofoam trays are the only option. These trays are at Edina High School and Valley View Middle School, if not more schools in the district. Styrofoam has been banned in many states throughout the United States for good reason. Styrofoam is made with a chemical called styrene that leaches into our food when students eat off of the Styrofoam trays. This is toxic to humans, especially when students are exposed to the chemicals every day of the week at lunch. It is so necessary to put the well-being of students in the district over the price of these goods. Styrofoam trays are also horrible for the environment. In the lunchroom, students use the Styrofoam trays for less than 30 minutes, but after that, they're thrown out and each one will take approximately 500 years to decompose. Or to break apart in the landfill. While each producing toxic methane gas throughout those 500 years. As Styrofoam and other plastics break apart, they never fully go away. They just break down into smaller and smaller pieces until we cannot see them. We ingest a credit card of plastic every week due to these microplastics in our food. Edina needs to do what they can to reduce single-use plastics, especially in Styrofoam.
You can ignore that. It didn't reset when you started. I apologize.
I'm asking you all to think about the safety of students and the well-being of our world. We need to find an alternative to Styrofoam. Your options are to have reusable trays that are washed or to have compostable trays that can be effectively composted. When asked why Edina High School composting program has stopped, it is said to have, have to do with COVID and lack of student support. I, the Project Green Challenge, and Project Earth are all enthusiastic to begin this again. A common misconception that is often brought up is that food waste will just break down back into soil no matter what bin it is put into. That is false. Food waste needs oxygen to be able to decompose. When put into landfill where it cannot reach the oxygen it needs, it releases methane gas, just like plastics and Styrofoam. In composting facilities, the waste has plenty of access to oxygen to effectively break apart. It is more important now than ever that Edina Public Schools is a leader in enforcing sustainability. And we can do this by restarting composting programs at schools and discontinue the use of Styrofoam. Thank you.
Next, we have Olivia Mayhart. And after that will be Emma Hudson. And Olivia, if you can just wait to make sure that I get the clock reset to three minutes. Okay, thank you.
Hello, I'm Olivia McCart. I'm a junior at Edina High School and I'm one of the leaders of our environmental club, Project Earth. And in the last year and a half, we have worked on a sustainability plan that we have been pushing for the district. The latest United Nations Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change report says that we have less than 10 years to limit devastating global warming and avoid a climate change catastrophe. The world has already experienced serious detrimental costly impacts and the younger generation will face most of the burden of these consequences. Minnesota is the second fastest warming state in the country and the state has started to see the effects of climate change through increased precipitation, higher temperatures, and more extreme weather patterns. Edina has seen these effects, especially with increased flooding in the morning side neighborhood and other areas identified by the city of Edina. It is our recommendation that the school board create a 20-year, 20-year district-wide sustainability plan that will include goals that could, that should accomplish, be accomplished every five years and base these goals around the general statement, the statement of environmental resource management policy, specifically in the areas of clean energy and energy efficiency, climate literacy, student well-being, clean transportation, waste reduction, as well as preservation and restoration of natural resources on school grounds, the re-establishment of the Go Green Committee, including school board members, students, teachers, staff, and community members being a part of it. And to foster Edina Schools' leadership and sustainability among other school districts in the state. And to align the district's greenhouse gas emission goals with the goals of the city of Edina. And to ensure that district manages resources in the most efficient manner, which reduces utility costs and protects the environment. And then also to input the feedback from students and families in regards to sustainability priorities. We will continue to work on our sustainability plan. And we are also currently focused on getting a sustainability assessment for the school district. In a few weeks, we are speaking at the Buildings, Grounds, and Management Meeting. And we look forward to working more on that in the future. It is my honor to present a former student, Emma, who was also a part of Project Earth and now works for the Green Corps.
Hi there. I'm just going to adjust this really quick. My name is Emma Hudson. I graduated from Edina High School in 2017 and from Loyola University Chicago in 2021. And I'm now currently, was and currently am a resident of Edina. I volunteer with Project Earth on a weekly basis. I provide mentorship and guidance. I'm also currently a Minnesota Green Corps member working on waste reduction and diversion at the Minnesota Department of Veteran Affairs. I wanted to provide a little bit of insight to my journey as well. One of the main reasons I chose to study environmental politics at Loyola was because of the AP Environmental Science course that I took in my senior year of high school. In fact, I applied directly to Loyola's Institute of Environmental Sustainability and declared my major in my first semester of my freshman year because I was so certain that that was the path that I wanted to take with the rest of my life and my career. Having the opportunity to learn more about the environment and the impact that humans have not only inspired changes within my personal life, but also my educational and professional life as well. Edina High School and the broader Edina public school system can and does shape the lives and the future of the next generation. And I'm excited about the opportunity to collaborate with the district alongside the students of Project Earth to create, implement, and achieve sustainability goals that are in alignment with the recently passed City of Edina Climate Action Plan. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'm so sorry. We also have, the students are creating a climate action summit as well that we will communicate details about in the next coming months.
Great. Thank you very much. Next, we have Sarah Hermata. And after Sarah Hermata will be Owen Michelson.
Hello, board. It's been five years since I first asked this board about dyslexia and basic literacy. So now I'm here five years later. And there have been some great conversations. There's a new strategic plan and there's a comprehensive literacy plan. What I'm not seeing is a commitment to the letters program, language essentials for teachers of reading and spelling. And I'm not seeing that for either the teachers or the principals and administrators. There are two different training programs. And, you know, if the principals were knowledgeable about the basics of literacy, it would just go very far in supporting the kids in reading and writing and building the, the base, the foundational base they need for school. I'm also not seeing a commitment to literacy in the Legislative Action Committee that the board runs. Last week, two of the three legislative education committees discussed literacy and letters and what the state is intending to do. I would like to see our board and our school district paying attention and supporting that literacy piece. Currently, Edina Schools knowingly graduate more than 125 students each year who are not proficient in reading. That's proficiency. That's the bare minimum. That's not, you know, whether they're mastering literacy or something like that. It is like the bottom rung. And our kids need to have their literacy skills down. So my question, is that the full potential expected that leads to discovering possibilities and thriving?
Owen Michelson and then Sarah Patzloff.
I got some props here.
I recognize the bag, Owen.
All right. Hey, well, guys, I miss you. And I do. Can you believe that? For the camera, I'm Owen Michelson, former board member. And first off, Dan and Michael and Karen, congratulations. This is your full dress, dress board meeting. And I had to come back for nothing else to thank Julie and Erica and Janie and Lenny for all these go away, get it, get out of here presents. Like these little things for my, my bike to let people know I'm in the way. Or my little ringy thingy. Thank you. And a little ranch dressing inside joke. So, but you know, the thing that you gave me that I like the most, and I've been reading it every night, is the Constitution. And can I take my mask off up here? Okay. Is the Constitution. And I've been picking away at this every night. And something fascinating about it is the word "education" is not in here at all. Isn't that strange? Where does education get picked up? It's dealt with in the Tenth Amendment, which delegates to the states anything that's not in the Constitution. And education then is delegated to the states. And then by virtue of the state of Minnesota delegating it to our elected officials, you actually get the large majority of the authority over our education. It's not somebody else. It's, I would much rather have you all make those decisions for us than a distant bureaucrat in DC. So I think we every so often need to really note and commend the fact that you all are our decision makers. So thank you for your conscientiousness. And I'm excited to watch how this board plays out. And, well, you know me, I just love to be able to express my opinions. And my second substantive remark that I want to make is that I hope we can do away with the masks or at least make them optional. I mean, for sure, make them optional because there's a lot of, there are a lot of people who would like to wear them. But to make them optional. Masks are not very effective. Cloth masks with Omicron and Ostrahome has said as much recently. Nick Kelly has also said that they're the least effective of our mitigation strategies. Hepa filters are by far the best. Here in Edina, our vax numbers are very high. We are, we're encouraged to follow the science. And the science isn't real strong on masking. And just two and a half weeks ago, The Atlantic Monthly had an excellent article about how the evidence is really not very strong for masks. And I can leave this with any of you if you're, if you're interested. They had a very interesting quote that they speak of, well, the CDC is recommending masking, but the WHO isn't. The World Health Organization is not. And they have a quote from pertinent to this. "For even children ages six to 11, the WHO does not routinely recommend masks because the potential impact of wearing a mask on learning and psychosocial development is not good." So that's just recently. And.
Owen, can you wrap it up?
Oh, is it already? Oh, bummer. You know, what I was going to say is that my final prop would be all of you. And if we can get to mask optional, then we can see your beautiful faces again.
And what a treat that would be for everybody, so.
It's worth ringing a bell for.
Thank you, Owen. We have Sarah Patzloff and then Katie Peterson.
It's generally not easy to follow up after Owen. But I'm Sarah Patzloff and I'm here to talk about masks, as I'm sure many people are. And as an additional former school board member, I, I'm sure this hasn't been easy on any of you. And I, I understand that, particularly for the new members who are having to jump into the middle of this. But leadership isn't easy. It's tough and you have to make those tough calls. And as Owen was just saying, those, those decisions are put on to you. And it's only seven of you with a superintendent who's given you what I think is a very good recommendation. She's given you recommendations before around masking that have not been approved. And I would hope that tonight we would go forward with this. Leadership is tough. I know that you're hearing from both constituencies, those who want the masks on and those who want them off. But after two, almost two full years of this, it's time. And I heard in some of the discussions tonight during the work session, even concerns around our early learners. Yes, they may not be eligible for vaccines, but what is the potential damage of children learning the most basic skills of talking and human expressions? The little pictures that we show them so that they understand that. And yet we're having them cover the most, two of the most important features of their faces. We need to move forward. It's, you're recommending that it be optional. Those families who want that for their children can continue to do that, same with our staff. But we need to allow our children to get back to some kind of normalcy. When you make these decisions and continue to want to move forward, say with masking, those results long-term will fall on your shoulders. We have a lot that has happened to our kids in the last two years, from misgraduations to, to being behind in basic skills, to actual depression and potential suicides. We have to start making those tough calls to say, we want to work with the community. We want to allow our kids and parents to make those decisions. I heard you talk about protection and kids being protected. But what about that long-term damage? Where's the protection for that? We don't know what that's going to be, but I think it's pretty clear based on example that Owen gave and many other publications and doctors coming out and saying, there is damage coming down the pipe. We're seeing it. We have to be strong enough to say, we're ready to allow this parent, this choice to be up to the parents and the students. And I was really glad to hear you guys say that for those families who want to continue this, that you're not going to hopefully put the additional pressure on the teachers. Our teachers have also been through a lot, having to enforce another thing. It's time to focus on education. That's what we're here to do. We need to get you guys back to the work of education. And let's stop with the discussions of this going forward. My time's up. Thank you.
After Katie Peterson will be Tara Finn.
Good evening. I was reading an article recently about an exchange between a mom and her daughter. And the mom was explaining to the daughter that they wouldn't have a masking requirement any longer in her child's school. And the daughter's response was one of fear. But mom, they're going to see my face. In my own small world, I have two children. My name's Katie Peterson. I have. I have an eighth grader at Valley View and a fifth grader at Normandale. And we've been fortunate. They're doing well. They're doing great, really, across the board. But here's what I see. I see them now going to school as a place of rules and compliance. They can interact with their friends. They're wearing masks on the playground outside. School has become a place of rules and compliance versus a place that inspires a joy of learning that they can take with them the rest of their lives. And this breaks my heart. I thought I would be later in the list somehow, because I'm kind of a newbie to the school board circuit here, but, so I thought I would be coming after a lot of other people sharing the statistics and the details, but I've read much of the same work that Owen was referencing. So certainly, I think there's a lot to be said. For what the science and the data are telling us on this journey, we're learning a lot. But here's the additional kind of from the heart and what strikes me as a parent in this community. We know, I think it's broadly aligned, that children are at lower risk with COVID than any other part of the population. And yet, we are holding our children to a higher standard of masking compliance than anywhere else in the community. I go to sporting events, I go to musical events, I go to restaurants, I go to Target, and we don't have the same level of requirement. And then for this element of our population that is still learning and developing, we're asking them, we're holding them to a higher standard than we're holding anyone else to. And as far as I can see, and I'm not an epidemiologist, nor I don't think are any of you, there's not really any data to support that we hold our children to this standard. And meanwhile, we are doing damage to their love of learning and their ability to relate to other people and to build that empathy that is what will sustain us all into the future. So I am here to voice my overwhelming support for Dr. Stanley's recommendation and in support of this community being part of the movement to move on from this virus and start to accept it as part of how we live, but not letting it dictate how we live. Thanks so much for your time tonight and your leadership.
After Tara Finn, we have Shelby Reitz.
It's been nearly two months since I spoke at the December board meeting regarding parent volunteers not being welcomed into our elementary school. Weeks went by after I spoke at that meeting with no follow-up, and we finally made the decision to withdraw one of our children from Countryside Elementary. Since we withdrew her, some discussions have taken place regarding our concerns, but we're still left wondering why. Why are other elementary schools across the district, but did they continue to welcome parents into the building, but were still very much not welcome, with the exception of helping support our short-staff chef? We just don't understand why we get communications saying, due to COVID-19 guidelines, we cannot have parent volunteers in our classroom. Meanwhile, we have friends three miles away in the district helping out at their kids' friendship parties and other activities, including in-classroom academic support. It sounds like pending some decisions tonight, Countryside will be opening up their doors to welcome more parents back into the building. Tonight, I urge you to think about equity across the schools and create some consistency here as you make decisions. I'm also here tonight in support of Dr. Stanley's proposal to downgrade the masking expectations to strongly recommended. Like many parents, we've been telling ourselves for almost two years that kids are resilient. Masks don't bother them, masks don't interfere with their education. But the reality is, these statements simply aren't true. It wasn't until we stepped foot through our daughter's new mask-optional school to drop her off on her first day that we fully realized this. As we walked down the hallway toward her classroom, we had an overwhelming sense of emotion, and it was a good one. We were actually being welcomed into the building, seeing smiles on kids' and staff's faces, and feeling a strong sense of community. This was quite the contrast from watching our kindergarten stare at a wall six feet apart from his friends while he eats his lunch. It's just sad. One thing I want to make sure that's clearly addressed in this proposal is, if it's approved, which I hope it is, is the quarantine and isolation protocols. I see in the packet that MDH contact tracing will continue and CDC quarantine and isolation protocols will continue. But my question is, what does this mean for an unmasked child who sits next to somebody who tests positive? At the new school community we're a part of within the Edina City limits, families are notified if somebody tests positive in their child's classroom via email, and it's no more complicated than that. No child is kept home simply for an exposure, no quarantine for an exposure. All healthy children are welcome in their seat in the classroom, no questions asked, and this is how it should be in Edina Public Schools. It's worth noting, we still have a child enrolled at Countryside in kindergarten with a super awesome teacher, and two more coming up the ranks. We are still really invested in Edina Public Schools and will continue to advocate for them. One way we can do this is by sharing the things that are working where elsewhere to see if we can apply them here. This new school we're now a part of has been operating safely under a mask-optional protocol all school year long, and I'm eager to see our district adopt a similar strategy. Last week, I extended an invitation to all of the board members, Dr. Stanley and Assistant Superintendent Smazel, to walk through the halls of this school with us. For almost two years, you've been inundated with links to media reports and statistics. And it's really different to experience it firsthand, especially within our community. So none of you took me up on that offer, but if any of you aren't in support of scaling back the mask mandate, I urge you to reach out to me and take me up on the opportunity. We'd love to have you there. Thanks.
After Shelby will be Izzy Wagner.
Hi, everyone. It's nice to see you again, second time this week. I'm Shelby Reitz from Concord Elementary School. I have three kids there, and then one who should be starting kindergarten this fall. And I am also here to express my support for Dr. Stanley's proposal to roll back the mask mandate. I agree, it is time to let our kids get back to normal, and I don't think there's going to be any better opportunity than now. Between the low, the plummeting case rates and the high vaccine rates and the number of children who have recently had Omicron and now are sort of in good stead for at least 90 days, this is really a shining opportunity to sort of off-ramp from the crash course that we have been on for two years. And I will preface it by saying that I was not categorically opposed to masks, like at the beginning of the pandemic. I'm pretty sure I got some elastic from Member Shaw. I made so many masks that I got free shoes from my favorite retailer. But we've learned a lot in the last two years, and this is not two years ago. I think we have known for 18 months that the children are at the least risk of the virus. There's whole countries and whole American states where young children have never been masked, and their hospitalization rates, mortality rates are not any higher than ours. And two years on, we still haven't seen a well-designed control study showing any statistically measurable benefit from wearing the masks. I think the CDC director has recently come out, and Mr. Kelly has told us, that the cloth masks simply are not that effective. So the benefit to masking the little kids is basically zero. Unfortunately, the costs are not zero. I realize that there are kids who have adjusted to masks just fine, but the fact that kids are resilient doesn't mean that it's right to impose hardships that they don't need to bear. And some of the kids have not adjusted just fine. The masks are an ongoing problem for my kid with anxiety. She doesn't like how they feel, she can't understand people, she can't tell if other kids like her because they can't see themselves smile, you know? So I don't think that we could keep her in the district if, you know, we don't drop the masks. And having done one round of masked kindergarten, I will unequivocally say that we won't do it again. So that's two kids out, and we're a very invested family, and we don't really want to leave. So if you have no benefit and you have some cost, it's not a good deal. That's just a bad policy. So I think it's time to move away from it. I will also note that it's sort of ridiculous that the kids are wearing masks at school and nowhere else. The kids, they are not stupid, you know? They're out and about, and they see what's going on in the broader community. And when they know that they could go to birthday parties and gymnastics and art and hockey and Skyzone and Tuttles and all of these other places, not in a mask, but that they have to wear them at school, they know that it's a bit ridiculous. And I think it erodes their trust in our leaders, and it erodes their respect for the authority that, you know, we want to teach them to respect when it's justified. So I think when you see the people out in the community not wearing masks, it's a signal that the families have moved on and that parents value normal experiences for their kids, and that even the people who were very worried a year ago are returning to live, like, living full, normal lives. And as the center of our community, the schools should reflect that. So I would encourage you to adopt Dr. Stanley's mask recommendation immediately, and also to not stop there. Even once we drop the masks, there are a host of other protocols and restrictions that are sort of making the teachers' lives more difficult and are making the kids' lives more difficult and making your PTOs' lives more difficult. And so I urge you to revisit those as soon as we can. But I do think that dropping the masks or making them optional would be an excellent first step, and there is no better time than now. Thanks.
After Izzy will be Ellie, and I apologize, I can't read your last name. Macken?
Hi, my name is Izzy Wagner, and I'm a senior at Edina High School. And I wanted to take this opportunity to voice my strong support for continuing to mandate masks at schools. We've heard a lot from adults in the district, and while I think they make some valid points about socialization, it's really the students that this will be affecting. While I do feel that for younger students, it may hurt social interaction to be wearing masks, and I don't doubt that it's inconvenient, what would really hurt my mental health and the mental health of many students at Edina High School is to feel like we have to go to school every day in a place that we don't feel safe in, and that doesn't provide a virtual school option, and to know that even if students aren't at risk for COVID, our teachers are and our families are. And that every day we go to school, we make the risk that we will catch COVID and bring it home to other people. So it was last March roughly two years ago that we first went into quarantine, and in that time, COVID has gotten better and worse and better, again, as each new variant has been introduced and new outbreaks have occurred. And if there's been any one constant, it has been the idea that there is no certainty in a global pandemic, and that as soon as cases go down, there is likely to go up again in a short amount of time. So as the board considers removing the mask mandate, let me ask this. With the unlikelihood of cases staying low for any significant amount of time, why would we remove a mandate that has been proven throughout the pandemic to reduce the spread of COVID? The CDC and MDH both recommend universal indoor masking. And as one of the few schools that has remained open throughout the entire school year, why should we stray from what has undoubtedly allowed us to continue in-person school? Time and again, I have seen the students at my school step up, double masking and making the efforts to wear KN95s even when they're difficult to access, especially for students. And though I obviously can't speak for all students, many of us just want to get through this pandemic without having to worry about spreading a deadly disease while we're at school. Thank you for your time, and thank you, board members, for all that you do.
Thank you. Ella? And then will be Alana Halloran.
Hello, my name is Ella McHart, and I am a junior at Edina High School. Today, I'm here to talk about why I think it is essential to continue the mask mandate. As a district, it is crucial to prioritize the health and education of the students. If you decide to make masks highly recommended, I guarantee that COVID rates at the school will increase significantly, which would potentially lead to the closing of Edina Public Schools. This will not only put more stress on the students, but also sabotages their academic experience as well as their mental health. I want you to consider that this pandemic is not over yet, which means we have to take the right measures to help ensure that students stay in school. Unlike many school districts within Minnesota that didn't require masks, we have stayed open so far for the whole entire school year. That is not a mere coincidence. As for the credibility of masks, according to the CDC, masks reduce the infection rate by 70%. Furthermore, we shouldn't get rid of something that is working. Thank you.
Is it Alana? Okay, thank you.
Hello, members of the board. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I would like to add on to the opinions of my peers in discussing the issue of the mask mandate. I, along with most students, am weary of masks. I agree, it's much better to smile and see people's faces, but like most of the students at my school, at Edina High School, we don't want them gone yet. To be honest, when I first heard that there's an option of masks to become optional or go away, I was scared. Me and my sister are immunocompromised, and the belief that we could catch COVID and potentially miss more school was terrifying. And I believe that there are some important things to consider when making this decision to make masks optional within the school. Firstly, it's important to consider that it's not just the students and teachers who are affected by this. It's the families, it's the friends, and especially the young students who can't be vaccinated yet. So many teachers have young children, so many families have siblings that are younger and can't be vaccinated. And the effects of COVID long-term, it's not known yet, both neurologically and physically. And honestly, I don't think that's a risk that we should be taking. As well, it's honestly terrifying to go to school knowing you could be carrying a deadly virus someone else could. There's just so many uncertainties. And as well, I think it's just safer to wait. Masks have proven to work, as Ella and Izzy have stated. I mean, it's been working so far. Why stop now? I mean, online learning for so many people was terrible, both academically, socially, and no one wants to go back to that. If masks were to be made optional, no doubt, teachers would be getting sick and missing school, and that would affect entire classrooms. It's virtually impossible to be productive when you're at home or working with a virtual sub, which is the current measure in place when a teacher is out of school. And it's much better for me to be working with masks when I can still communicate with my classmates and be in person. And I think overall, it's much safer to at least continue masks till the end of the school year and wait for things to fund and figure itself out. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you to all our speakers for coming tonight. And that ends our community comments. We are now moving on to our consent agenda. Is there anything anyone would like to remove from the consent agenda? Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Did you get those in? Okay. We will now vote to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? The consent agenda has been approved. We're moving on to our discussion items, and I am going to turn it over to Director Green, who is chair of our Policy Committee to guide us in our policy discussion. Director Green?
Thank you, Chair Allenberg. We have three policies for discussion tonight. Policy 425, 522, and 613. Just so that the public knows, and board members already know, all of the policies come through our Board Policy Committee. They get reviewed with our administration and staff, and then through MSBA, Best Practice, Minnesota School Board Association. And on top of that, they also are looked at for Edina Public Schools' specific perspective. And so we'll start with Policy 425. This policy is our staff development and mentoring. The edits that were made was really updating policy format and making it consistent. It came through the review cycle. So I don't know if any board members have any questions. Fantastic. Great. So that'll move, Policy 425 will move to action at our next meeting. The next policy that is Policy 522, I'm going to invite our counsel up, Trevor Helms. And this is Title IX sex nondiscrimination policy. And this is a policy that was revised really based on statute and federal statute that came down. And so it looks a lot different than our old Policy 522 to be updated and current. So I thought that maybe one of the board members had a question or a comment. I'm looking at Director Shaw.
I do have a question. One of, I actually might have more than one, so I'm just trying to get the letter of where it is. Hold on, sorry, I was scrolling through the board book. This is not wording that's changed. And can you walk me through it? I'm sorry, I should have had this open. It's the part that talks about where it can occur, that it cannot occur on school grounds, but it can occur on school grounds. It was confusing to me, and I think I read it maybe 10 times. I'm sorry that I'm trying to find it. Oh, it is G. Section 2, General Statement of Policy G.
Yes.
Can you just clarify for me, since I'm not in Policy Committee, it's not, this is just my time to get clarification on that.
Yeah, and I think, so first of all, I would, I'd share that a lot of this information, a lot of the MSBA's model policy, which is, this is largely based on, come directly from the federal regulations on Title IX. And, you know, it follows that very closely. So I would apologize, federal regulations aren't always written in the most clear and concise way. And so I think that what this is attempting to say is that essentially, Title IX applies if it occurs within our educational programs, whether on or off campus. But then it says that something that isn't in your educational program that is off-campus wouldn't be covered by this policy. And then there's also an additional piece that talks about something that happens outside the United States is not covered by this policy. So I think that essentially, the important thing is, does it have some sort of impact on our educational environment or within our educational system? So it's not saying that all off-campus conduct couldn't potentially fall under this policy. And for that, you really would kind of have to go back to, in general, when we talk about conduct that's off-campus, there really has to be some kind of a tie or a nexus to the district, to our activities, to the educational environment. So I think that's the important factor there. And then, you know, the on or off, the awkward phrasing kind of takes care of itself from there.
Thank you. Related to the not, or having this only apply within the United States, what then happens if there is an incident when we have student travel outside of the country? Is it, you know, there's a lot in here that I know I don't love, I don't agree with, but it is the law. Is there, what is different and how would we address something that happened on, say, a student travel outside the country?
Yeah, and I think it's important just for the whole Board, I don't know how much background you have on this to know. The Title IX regulations, when you read them, they were very clearly written for colleges. They were written for college campuses and sexual assault allegations that are made on college campuses. So frankly, if you asked me to armchair quarterback this and say, why is that in there that it talks about being outside the United States? It's because colleges have study abroad programs. And they didn't want to have to use this entire process for their study abroad programs. So it is very clear that anything that happens outside the United States is not covered under Title IX. That being said, if we have banned kids going to China, if we have students traveling somewhere else, we have expectations and requirements that they are still going to follow our policies while on those trips as part of an educational program, as part of Edina Public Schools. And just because the Title IX policy doesn't strictly apply, that does not mean that you can't follow one of your other policies, your harassment policy, your discrimination policy, your bullying policy. Those would all still potentially apply in that situation. So it's not saying that if you send students to another country as part of school, that you can't do anything. It's just it doesn't fall under this particular policy and these particular procedures.
So would we not have to adhere to the changes in this policy if it did happen outside of the U.S.?
Correct. So the big change in this policy is the resolution process and the grievance process. So no, in that situation, if there was sexual harassment that occurred on a ban trip to China, you would not have to follow this in the same way that you would if there was sexual harassment on a ban trip in Minnesota. Not to say that you wouldn't follow one of your policies and that you couldn't potentially discipline, but you wouldn't go through this particular grievance process.
Okay. My last comment is a little bit more of a, kind of a granular formatting issue. So in reading this policy, it's complicated. Like you said, I, in an effort to have information be readily available to a student who's trying to access policy, my question was under the Section A in reporting, where we talk about contacting our coordinator. I just was hoping we could add some language in there, referring a reader back to where that information is, or even including the coordinator. I want to make that information as accessible to any student, or teacher, or parent, or anybody looking at it, without having to kind of get into the whole reading of the policy. It's more of an accessibility and kind of a courtesy, is the way I looked at it. So that is kind of more for you guys for formatting.
Yep. So right now, under 2H, the coordinator's there. What you're saying is you would like the coordinator listed wherever it refers to the coordinator?
Not in every place. In Section 5, let me get to it. There it is.
Which would not be, I mean, I'm not saying that would be difficult. I just wanted to make sure that I had clarity of what you were referring to.
I just felt like in Section 5, Letter A, where it says harassment toward a student should report the alleged acts as soon as possible to the Title IX coordinator, felt like a natural place to refer the reader to who that was, to either who it was or where in the policy that person was named. It's more of a trying to make it ease of use if anybody needs to access it.
I think that's a good suggestion. Does anyone else on the Board have objection to adding that? Okay. Great.
Those were my questions.
Does any other Board members have questions on this policy? Thank you. We'll go ahead and make that change, and then we will bring this back for action at our next meeting. And the last policy that we have here is Policy 613, graduation requirements. And just a few notes, this policy was changed to reflect current requirements and changes from the state and current EPS. Changes, basically making it up-to-date. We wanted to make sure that with the new changes that rolled down, with like our language arts, that it was reflective in this policy before this graduating class. And we've also talked as a Board about profile of a graduate and how that will be coming back to the Board and through teaching and learning. And so with that, when that comes, then we will bring that, we have the potential to bring this back if so needed. So that's where the setup is. So does anyone have any questions about this policy?
One quick question. So in the appendix, where it talks about what the high school graduation requirements are?
Mm-hmm.
For English, there's eight semesters of English. For math, it's six credits in grades nine through 12. So most of the other subject areas don't specifically call out in grades nine through 12. So I'm curious as to why for the math one we do. So if you could take that back and take a look at it. So for example, if you're an umptee-ump, you're not going to take those in nine through 12. You might take them in six, seven, or eight. If you're double-accelerated, you're not going to take them in nine through 12. So I just don't know why it's there.
Is Director Decent Hubert here? I can't see her. Do you mind coming up and talking about that?
Okay. Good evening, Chair Allenberg and Dr. Stanley and members of the Board. We've had a lot of discussion around this and with Mark Carlson and with Randy specifically in our math department, and the importance of our students to continue their math learning through the high school year. So for a variety of reasons, really hard to go on to your college in postgraduate education with ending your math credits early on, possibly even 10th grade, right, through some of the acceleration pathways that we have. So we thought it's really critical that we have that in the policy, so that that is clear to families, that that nature of math and the sequence of it, and preparing our kids for college readiness, that that should be in there that way. There looks like more questions, Lenny.
So I don't have another question. I'm not sure. I agree with that, because if you've taken it and you're, you know, if you've taken algebra in eighth grade, you will not take it in nine through 12. So that presents...
Oh, so is it the classes that are listed that you're asking about when you say that?
No, just a matter of requiring it in grades nine through 12, because the students will have taken it...
Yes, I hear what you're saying.
In part before and in part during those years.
Yeah, it's the continuation of the math credits, but yes.
Right.
I hear what you're saying with algebra.
Isn't it just the umptee-ump kids, really? Because double-accelerated students do have math opportunities through 12th grade, but the umptee-ump kids would not?
Umptee-ump would not, but opportunities...
Within the high school.
Opportunities is not the same as requirement.
Right, but I think, what I'm hearing Jody say is that we would require, so if a kiddo is double-accelerated going into ninth grade, there's still the expectation that they would take six credits of a math class during high school.
Yes, yes.
And there are opportunities, but does that go to the question of, do we have opportunities for our umptee-ump students? And I'm not sure that we do within the school.
Right.
They would be outside, they would be off-campus, but I think that would be the only thing, that would be the issue to Lenny's question.
Yep. So Lenny, the clarification of the classes with the six credits is what I'm hearing. That we wouldn't have them, I don't have the wording in front of me. But we wouldn't have them do algebra, again, if they've already done it, is what you're clarifying. Yes, I, mm-hmm. And that is true. We would not. But we would want the continuation of math to happen on the pathway, in the trajectory of choices that we have, so that we don't have a student not taking math after 10th grade.
Okay.
So a question on to Lenny's question. Are there other areas, subject matter areas, where that wording would need to either be removed or added? Like science, now that we're looking at that?
As I say, the only other subject area right now is that we don't have complete answers yet is science, because we have our new pathway, and we'll have students starting to enter the high school in that compacted pathway. And so our science team is discussing that and determining what's the best approach for the language within the policy for that.
Okay, so then when we revisit it, it would be, okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions on the policies?
I think it's just something we might want to revisit at some point.
I think we can, we'll make a note of that, and when it comes through with profile of a graduate, when we go back to look at this again.
Perfect.
We can have that discussion through teaching and learning, I would assume.
Mm-hmm. Okay. And that's it.
So if no one has any more questions, Policy 613 will move for action at the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Julie. We're now moving to our action items. Do I have a motion to approve the COVID-19 update with recommendations?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Dr. Stanley, I will turn it over to you to introduce the topic.
Thank you very much, Chair Allenberg. So my team and I have come back to the Board, as we promised throughout the school year, to provide COVID updates, to provide an update in how we've been monitoring data. And since the Omicron surge, we have gone back and monitored data as well. And we know that there are, there is a drop in COVID case rates, both at our schools as well as within the community. We have also looked at the, while Omicron is highly contagious, it is less virulent. And we know that we have an increase in vaccination rates, as well as a percentage of students who have reported that they have contracted COVID, and yet we do not have data in our system that shows that they are fully vaccinated. So based on this information, we believe at this point, we are in the position where we could move to masking strongly recommended, as opposed to universal masking. We would continue to monitor this at all times. I proposed, my team and I proposed a metric that we would use around absence rates. I've worked with my data analyst and pulled absence average data for two years ago. We believe that this may be a metric that we can use that would be reasonable. I believe that our, as our community case rates would begin to rise, we would also see absences within students, and so that that would be an actual metric that we could use. So what is important to note is that there would still be several mitigations that are in place. We would still follow the CDC recommendations about isolation and about quarantine. We believe that that is important. We would still follow physical distancing at this time. We believe that that is important. When you make changes and you change too many variables at one time, it is too difficult to track what could possibly be making a difference in a system. And to move from masking universal to masking strongly recommended, and then change several other variables, in my opinion, would be incredibly irresponsible. And so that is why we would maintain focusing on CDC recommendations for quarantine, for isolation. I would like to invite up, if I could, Director Jorgensen, to talk a little bit about how we would expand some work that we would do around quarantine.
Thank you, Superintendent Stanley. The question that you were asking about was, you know, and again, in the vein of not trying to complicate things more, really maintaining the CDC and MDH guidelines related to isolation and quarantine. But there is another avenue that is available to us, especially in the area of quarantine. And this is a project that has been trialed in different areas, and it is one option that we can utilize in addition to the quarantine model that currently exists. We currently have the quarantine model where if students can't wear a mask, that they will need to just remain in quarantine for the full 10 to 14 days, depending on whether it's a home exposure or whether it's a school exposure. We have the early return guidelines with quarantine, in which we can do a testing so that students can, after five days of isolation after day zero, or excuse me, of quarantine after day zero, they can come back with a negative test on day six. That being said, we also have another avenue available to us, which is called test to stay. I talked about this a little bit the last time that I came in front of the Board. The test to stay model was something that we were taking a look at specifically for students that could not wear a mask, they were masked, exempt, and they were not vaccinated. And so it was a very small population of students at that time that we were taking a look at. What it amounts to is that students that are identified as close contacts can then go under a testing protocol. And the testing protocol is us actually sending test kits home with the family. And then each morning for the next five to seven days, students would be required to test before coming to school, as long as they're negative on the test, that they can continue in school without going through the standard isolation or quarantine practice. So this is a model that we believe that we have enough capacity within our system right now, because we have actually a surplus of test kits that we can send home with families. And as Dr. Stanley was saying, we're really talking about a fairly small population in consideration of our 8,400 students. We actually have more, we have more students vaccinated, obviously, than we have unvaccinated at this point in time. So we're talking about a population that is either not vaccinated fully yet, or is a population of students that is unvaccinated. Really, when we take a look at the metrics that Dr. Stanley and Greg Gusweiler had put together regarding our overall student population, the number of students that would have the natural immunity based on COVID positivity within the last 90 days also puts into the category of a group of students that would not be required to quarantine. Those that are fully vaccinated are not required to quarantine in response to being in close contact. So the only population of students really that we have left that are required to quarantine are those individuals that are either under-vaccinated, i.e., they've only completed one shot or have not been up-to-date with the number of shots they've taken, or are unvaccinated altogether. That's actually a fairly small population right now, when we take a look at the way things have come together, especially after the Omicron surge, because there has been a number of students that have turned up positive that were not vaccinated, but now because they've had Omicron have the natural immunity that we would suggest for the next 90 days, which really almost pushed us right through, close to the end of the school year. So the test to stay model, once again, is one that could shorten the quarantine process. Now, the give-back here is that if we pursue the test to stay model, then the student would be required to test each morning for about seven days straight. And that they must, the parents must report that the student came up negative to that testing, but during the next 10 days. So from the point of exposure, for the next 10 days, the student is in attendance, they would be required to wear a mask. So this may sound like it's restrictive, but at the same point, it's an opportunity for us to keep students in school. And that is our primary goal, is to keep our students in school. This would be an avenue by which we could avoid that quarantine altogether as long as we're willing to make that sacrifice of wearing a mask for 10 days and doing that testing on a regular basis. Again, we believe that we can, we can work through this with the population of students that we have that don't fit any of the criteria for not having to quarantine, and we believe that it would be an effective strategy to keep our students in school.
Thank you for that, Jeff. I appreciate that. You know, I think the other thing that I would like to say is that we've learned during this time of COVID that nothing is fixed, right? There is not a bookmark. And for that reason, and in alignment with policy that has been set, I can't guarantee exactly what would happen next month if a new strain or variant of COVID came that became more virulent. I will say that in this time, in this context, I believe that it's the space where we could move to downgrade masking, downgrading meaning moving from the most restrictive to a lesser level of restrictiveness for masking to strongly recommended.
Dr. Stanley and public, we had a work session about this earlier today, so the board asked a lot of good questions. And if you were able to watch, then I have a couple of questions written down that board members ask. I was going to ask Dr. Stanley in case people weren't able to hear the answers earlier. One question I thought that was important to ask is why are you suggesting the delay as opposed to having, if it does get passed, get implemented tomorrow or in two days? If you could explain the pacing of your suggestion.
Absolutely. Culture and climate is really important in our schools and, you know, I see one of my students sitting out here in the audience and, you know, I had my other students come earlier. And I say my because they really are my kids, right? I'm responsible for them. And they are my biological children, however, I am responsible for the kids. And a shift like this, we've been in masks for all school year long and we've been in masks last year, really, for, for the vast majority of the school year that we were in school. And there's some learning that needs to happen. There's some learning in how to take care of one another. There's some learning in, to understand that everybody has their choices. And we're talking about four days. Now, I know for some of those four days, it's a long time. For others, we heard our students at the high school, there's going to be some adjustment that needs to take place. We do not have school next Monday. We do not have school for students next Tuesday. And that would allow for us to adjust to that climate and culture, for teachers to be able to go into their classrooms, to talk with students, to explain what's going to be acceptable, what is not going to be acceptable, how we are going to take care of one another if we choose to wear masks, and we're going to take care of one another if we do not choose to wear masks. So that transition period is about culture and climate. We also have students who we know are immunocompromised and they aren't going to be able to stay in school in person after this decision is made. We need to give them space to transition into our virtual pathway. And we want to make sure that they have a quality transition as well because that's going to be a change for them. That is taking away some of their social experiences that they have had this year by being in school masked. So it is important, in my opinion, for us to be specifically responsible and to take care of our neighbors, our classmates, our friends' kids, to make certain that we allow for that transition time so that everyone is prepared on February 23rd as we would transition into strongly recommended masks.
Thank you, Dr. Stanley. Could you also speak to the role of the educator and administrator if this does pass in assisting keeping masks on students during the day?
Absolutely. So in this process, I was able to speak with several of my colleagues who have been in strongly recommended masking for a large part, you know, the school year, of course, Omicron came and that changed our lives for a while there. There represents about 68,000 students. And what I heard from them is teachers at the elementary level definitely partner with families. They are not necessarily able to absolutely monitor and guarantee. And so, again, this is a partnership. It is a partnership with families to say we honor that there will be students who want to, desire and need to remain masked. And teachers will work to the best of their ability to have the students masked. However, they will not be guaranteed to make certain that the students are masked. I love, I love how is, is Principal Mahoney still here in the room? Oh, there she is. If you could come up, I could not have said it any more eloquently than you said it during the work session. We remind students to put their glasses on. There are kiddos who come to school, they don't want to wear their coat even though it's 22 below.
I think you just said it perfectly, Dr. Stanley. No, I mean, I just think in elementary school, you know, being a kindergarten teacher for six years, I think we do everything from help kids zipper their pants, to put on their mittens, to try to get them to wear coats when it's negative 20 and it's really cool to not wear a coat. And, you know, we, kids deal with a lot of things, whether it's braces or glasses or different obstacles. And we try to recognize those differences and just recognize them as beautiful. And I think the masks are just another component of that. And families, one thing that we talked as a leadership group about is that families that are committed to masking for reasons that are important for their family, those kids are masking and they know their why, whether they're at hockey, at birthday parties, or they are at school. And that won't change whether we do strongly recommended or we do universal masking. Those kids will still come to school and they'll mask and they'll proudly say that my mom told me I can't take it off. And kids will say, cool, and move on. So I think teachers work right now to make sure kids remember things and do things in a partnership with families and that will, of course, continue. Masks won't change that.
Thank you. And that's a common conversation that was had amongst elementary principals as well. Now, you can imagine, you move into the middle school and the high school, that just becomes so much more complex and it's just not something that, that we would be able to even give a friendly reminder about because it's just too difficult to know which family wants their child to wear a mask in a 2,700 student school and which family doesn't. I think the key specific is we will do our best, but we cannot guarantee that that will happen. Thank you, Principal Mahoney.
So at this time, I'll open it up to board members for any comments that they want to make and then after that, we can move to the vote.
I could make some comments. You know, I heard it mentioned earlier tonight that, that the seven of us have some, have a tough job. We have tough choices we have to make. I was very clear at the beginning of this pandemic that in no uncertain terms did I ever think or take a decision like this lightly. And I don't think any of us do. We didn't take it lightly then and I don't think any of us take it lightly tonight. I think masks served a purpose in our district to keep kids in school. Dr. Stanley made that a very clear priority and we all latched on to that because that was the right priority to have, to keep kids in school. To have them masked before all of our students could be vaccinated allowed them to not be quarantined at the rates that other schools did. It worked. It worked for its purpose and we are so fortunate that we have high vaccination rates in our community and not all communities can say the same. We are so fortunate that we have facilities that allow us to have not only the recommended ventilation, but sometimes even higher levels. We have facilities that allow us to have our kids distanced and allow our kids to be outside. We are fortunate that we have the capacity and a comprehensive testing plan in place in our schools. We have nurses that can administer a test during the day. We have tests that we can send home with kids. We live in a community where tests are accessible. We have that capacity. We have so much that we are so fortunate for. I think I agree with Dr. Stanley that now is the time that we can say, we can peel back one of those layers of mitigation. But what I want to make sure our students hear is that masks, I, I want you to know that there is science that says masks can work. It's, it's out there. You agreed, you brought it to our attention that there is science that says masks work and I encourage our students to see this as, the verbiage that Dr. Stanley used, masks strongly recommended. This is not saying masks are going away and that we do not believe masks work because that's not the case. It's just at this time, to me, it's peeling back a layer of mitigation and allowing some of that benefit of having students who are comfortable, who are in a position to take their masks off, have that benefit in their education. So I just wanted to take a moment to make sure that the public knew that I do not take this decision lightly. I didn't take it lightly at the beginning of the pandemic and no decision do I take lightly right now.
From my standpoint, there is nothing in life that is zero risk. There's nothing in life that's 100% risk. Well, each member in this audience and at home and on this board might feel differently about what risk is okay for you versus what's okay for somebody else. For someone to say, you have to take my risk or I have to take your risk, that's part of being in a society that we all agree to be a part of. But we also then need to look at how we decide where we're going to go with this. From my standpoint, Dr. Stanley has done an effective job of understanding where are we today? Not where we were last month, not where we were two years ago, where are we today? And what is the context of that? And where we are today is that people who've wanted to mitigate, who've taken the steps that they needed to do and wanted to do that for themselves, their family and their community, they've done so. For those who have chosen a different path, they've done so. We now have to find a middle ground as to how do we move forward from here. So we don't all have to agree. We don't all have to come to the same conclusion using the same data or different data. But what we do need to do is realize the intentions of all of this are meant to find the best way forward so kids can be in school, learn in the best environment that they can, in a safe environment that they have here. You heard students this evening who gave a very clear voice to, they don't feel that way. That's not to be dismissed or to be somehow lowered or not as important as a parent's right to say that they're concerned about their kid's safety and their kid's learning and their kid's needs. Not one is more important than the other. But is there a decision that we could make that would satisfy both of those? No, because there's no such thing as zero risk. So all I would ask for people to consider, and I have considered, and why I would choose to support Dr. Stanley's recommendation, is that we're doing the best we can with the circumstances that we have, with the right intention of doing that for everyone in the best way possible. It's not for me to tell you what you should do for your child or what you should, or from that standpoint. All we can do is represent the 8,400 children who are in our charge and doing the best that we can with that. I'd only ask people to remember that regardless of whether you agree with this decision or not, that's actually the intention. That's how I'm approaching it. Thank you.
So I kind of look at this as a balance of risk and benefits. And that kind of leads me for the moment to be supporting the recommendation. I'll note that there was a community member or two that wrote in that suggested that there was a data error and I suspect that community member is correct, that some of these numbers are a little higher than they actually are, but we have other vaccinations that are in process that will actually increase those numbers. So I don't want to ignore the question that was raised about that. I do rely very heavily on the fact that we as a board have designated the superintendent as in charge to make changes on the fly. So that if we saw a circumstance where there was a greater severity of risk from, say, another variant, I would anticipate a change in this policy by the superintendent immediately and that there are other factors that are anticipated that she would take into consideration. Again, it's an analysis of what are the benefits and what are the risks? And so that ability to react to different circumstances is critically important to me. And so that's kind of where I'm sitting at the moment.
I wanted to kind of echo much of what board member Friedman said, or former Friedman said, about being able to react in, in a dynamic environment when it comes to it. I put the trust in Dr. Stanley and her team in terms of monitoring the data points and the, and the metrics that we're setting up for thresholds. And I feel that those are reasonable when it comes to ways to measure and if things change. When we set out at the beginning of the year to keep kids in school for as long as we could, I felt that that was the right goal. And I think by having the mechanism, but maintaining that and being able to, if there's a reason to pivot, whether it's staff-related absences or bus driver shortages or whatever, where those numbers trend up and we get to a point where we need to make a change that it'll mitigate it for a week or two or three or a month, I feel that's important that we have that piece in place. And I think that I also would be in support of Dr. Stanley's recommendation for this mitigation, or removing this mitigation strategy.
I echo a lot of what I've heard my fellow board members say tonight. The gravity of being a new board member and having this as one of our first major decisions has weighed pretty heavy on me. And I'm very aware that no matter how this vote goes tonight, there will be people in our community that will not be happy. In Edina, we talk a lot about excellence and we demand excellence. And I ask, I think, I, my ask is that no matter how this vote goes tonight, as we move through this transition period, starting tomorrow, we start to show some of that excellence in the way we treat each other and the decisions that people make. I ask that we're respectful of our teachers and our administrators as the rules don't change until the 23rd. I ask that we be respectful of each other and the choices that people may choose to make. For some of our families, they are worried about kids in their homes that can't be vaccinated yet. We heard from families that have babies, toddlers, preschoolers. Some of us are past that point and our kids can't be vaccinated. And so remember that sigh of relief that we felt, they're not there yet. Some people have worries because they have grandparents living in their homes and some have worries because some have people in their homes with an underlying health condition. And some of your kids have really struggled wearing masks. Their development has struggled. We've heard from both sides. And every time I get one of those emails, I put myself in those people's shoes and I think this is a hard decision. But I hope that we can, as a community, move forward with respect for each other and model for our children the kindness and respect that we want them to show to each other. And so I'm moving forward with a vote of support for Dr. Stanley's proposal.
I, I echo a lot of what you've heard up here tonight from the board, Dr. Stanley. And I just want to, you know, it's been, it has been two years and a couple of points I just want to make that I think are really important. One is, from the very beginning, masks were never all or nothing at all. I'm really proud of our district and mostly in our district, our students, because we brought forward and tried to have a comprehensive approach to COVID. brought forward and tried to have a comprehensive approach to COVID. None of us wanted COVID. None of us voted for COVID. I'm not rooting for it to win, despite what's been said on social media, which I'm going to put out there because I know that our community is better than that. But that, we have been really clear. And so we are at this point where we can look at our mitigation strategies and roll one back because of the comprehensive approach that we took. Vaccine clinics, testing hours by our adminis, hours by our administrators to keep our kids in school, that has been our number one. And we have not taken our eye off education over the last two years. So I'm going to be really clear about that. We have seen that. We are moving forward with different plans. We took a both and approach. And I'm really proud of this district, our principals, our teachers, and Dr. Stanley's lead here in the last, walking in as a new superintendent into this, into this environment. So I am in support of this recommendation. I look to the leads as the timing and how it rolls out. I know that the current data supports this in our system. We have tried to figure out how community spread relates to spread in the school and to try and balance that. And we really have tried to make sure that we have things in place to keep spread down in school, to keep kids in school, which is what I am really proud that we've been able to do. And the masks served a purpose in that. And they may one day again. I hope not. We all can hope not, but that is, that is where we're at. The only other thing that I just wanted to say is that as we move forward with this rollout, and what Director Gable said is that respect of how this works. And this is a heated, emotional topic. And every, if there's one thing I've learned over the last two years, every single student and family comes at things differently. Everybody. You have no idea why someone's wearing a mask. And so I just would ask for that respect and I, I have no doubt that, I have the confidence that the district will continue to keep a close eye on things so that if things were, start to bubble up anywhere, that there would be a plan in place. So thank you and I'm, I'm in support.
Thank you, Julie. I just have a couple of words and then we'll move to vote. Every COVID mitigation decision that I've personally made over the last few years has been a series of trade-offs and no decision that I've made over the past few years has come easy or with a satisfying answer. Each has been a choice with consequences that are less than desirable. But I've done, what I've had to do is weigh the risk and benefits of each decision. So here's what I believe. I do believe that masks and social distancing do help reduce, reduce the spread of COVID. I think that this is a viable COVID mitigation strategy that cannot be put aside permanently. It needs to remain part of a layered toolkit that our district has successfully been using in the past to help the spread of COVID within the walls of our district. I trust that we have the ability to be dynamic and respond if we need to make a change. And I wholeheartedly just trust Dr. Stanley's leadership to do that if need be. However, I also believe the following factors are true. The masks have a social and emotional impact on our students and an educational impact on our students. So for me, the question has always been, what is the cost benefit of these masks and what is the cost benefit at this specific point in time in the pandemic? Here are the factors that have determined my decision to approve Dr. Stanley's recommendation. First, other than those that are under five, parents have now had the opportunity to have their children completely, complete a full series of vaccinations for their students. If a parent chooses to have their student unmasked, they are now not directly impacting the ability of another child to stay in school due to quarantine protocols. Before, parents had the ability to vaccinate, that would have been the case. Given the high vaccination rates in our schools and the moderate efficacy of fabric masks, I do support downgrading masks from mandatory to recommended. However, I do have two caveats. One is that I would like a friendly amendment to your recommendation, Dr. Stanley, and add in that masks are recommended, recommended for all students and staff, except for those returning from quarantine after five days. And for those students, it is required until they're off of quarantine protocol. I think we need to be very specific and spell out that very short requirement period. And I don't know if other board members support that friendly amendment, but it's basically just clarifying that we do have students that will be required to wear a mask for following. We do say we're following C, the CDC guidelines, but that's spelling out the guideline that we are following. So.
I support that. I, that supports the conversation that we had in the work session as well. So I think if that makes things more clear, yes, I support it.
Yeah, I support it as well in notation for isolation.
Does anyone else have an issue with that?
I think it just follows exactly what Director Jorgensen pointed out. It is already the policy that we have.
It is. It's the policy we have, so it's not changing anything. It's just clarifying it for communication's sake. And the other, it's not really caveat, and I know you would do this anyway, Dr. Stanley, but I want to see a report back on the number of students quarantined, if we're able to maintain our in-person learning environment and if you feel there were any disruptions to the educational environment due to quarantines at our March 7th board meeting. Lastly, I want to remind people that this is just one piece of a multi-layered mitigation approach our district is taking. We are one of two districts in the entire state with a vaccine or test policy for staff. We are still contact tracing and we're still offering and expanding testing that Director Jorgensen brought. I do not want to discount the following factors that have been brought to our attention and I want individuals to know that I've listened and empathize with people that have students that cannot get vaccinated yet. I've listened to students that I know this will make anxious, including my own daughter, who is very upset about this decision. And for those that question the timing of this, as I said earlier, there aren't any great answers to this situation. But I do think it is time to move forward, rolling back this measure. Unless anything has anything, anyone has anything else to say, I think it's time that we vote. All those in favor of, I don't have the right words here, sorry. All those in favor of the COVID-19 recommendations, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? The recommendations passed. We will now move on to. We're now going to move, oh, do I have a motion to approve the revised 2021, 2022 budget?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It was Michael. And I don't know who was the second. Karen. Karen was the second.
Evening, Chair Allenberg, Superintendent Stanley and members of the board. Tonight we'll present the final or revised 21, 22 budget. That budget starts on page 255 of your board packet. The all-fund summary fund balance page is on page 271 of your board packet and I'd like to spend just a little bit of time making a few comments about that for, for your knowledge and information. In the general fund, the general fund staffing for the current year remains incomplete. Staff positions are still being filled. We have tried to reflect this in the overall general fund budget in salaries and benefits to the best of our ability. This budget also reflects an increase in the marketing communications budget of $25,000. The reason that we're doing that is that we're incurring expenses for online programming to advertise that right now. The substitute salary budget has increased by about $300,000 from past historical spending. We are using federal stimulus funding to support this additional expenditure. Budget for heating costs has been increased by $244,000 over the original budgeted amount, reflecting higher natural gas prices that we are seeing for this winter. Current retirements for the next school year as of February 1st are reflecting about 26.8 FTs of teacher retirements. Our average has been about 11 retirees per year. And since we are required to make an initial payment on or before June 30th of the current fiscal year, we have increased the severance budget by an additional $500,000 to accommodate this level of retirees. In this budget, federal stimulus funds, revenue and expenses are equal. And I'll go over that in a little bit. This budget preserves in its entirety, the subsequent fiscal, for the subsequent fiscal year, excuse me, the assigned amount of $1,738,818 for literacy and virtual programming. That remains untouched. This will play a key role in next year's budgeting. This final projected budget keeps the unassigned fund balance above 6% and allows for continued flexibility as we move forward with next year's budgeting process. The other operational funds, school nutrition and community education also remain in good financial position in this final budget. I'd like to move on to page 278, which is a federal stimulus funding page. This shows the amount of federal stimulus funding and the expenses incurred for 2021 and for 21, 22 to date as of January 31st, 2022. To date, we have had 17 different pots of money to spend out of, of which only five were completely spent out last year. We have more federal stimulus funding we can spend this year than last year. 3.7 million this year versus the actual amount we spent last year of 3.1 million dollars. These federal stimulus funds have been budgeted for the start of our comprehensive literacy program, additional mental health staffing, substitute salaries, letters training, COVID testing and contact tracing, summer programming, and small amounts of transportation, custodial overtime, technology and personal protective equipment. My thanks to Rochaath or District Controller for his help in putting this 21, 22 final budget together for presentation. Questions from board members.
Does this include the very last round of federal funding?
Yes.
It does?
We are up to date with what we have received from, through the state.
Okay.
With the federal funding, yes.
Thank you.
Director Topp, this was, as someone who does not sit on this finance committee, this was a very robust report and very well explained of how the different streams of funding work. And so I just wanted to thank you for laying it out like that. And I have no questions.
Thank you.
Do any board members have any questions? No questions, then I just want to thank you as usual for all your work and your team's work putting this together.
Thank you.
We will, we will now vote on the revised 2021, 2022 budget. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The 2021, 22 budget is approved.
Thank you, Chair Allenberg.
Thank you, Director Topp.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to approve the data metrics planned?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Excellent. We have Assistant Superintendent Smazel and Director of Teaching and Learning, De St. Hubert here. Welcome.
Greg, are you able to come up and join us? Greg Gusweiler, our data analyst here in Edina Public Schools. Good evening, Chair Allenberg, Superintendent Stanley, school board members, community, remaining audience members, good to see you. One of the great challenges in education is to measure and monitor learning, growth and readiness in kids. It truly is one of the hardest things for professionals to do, is to assess learner progress. Our team has developed some key metrics in assessing our progress toward our mission, our vision and our strategic priorities. The initial draft of these metrics was presented to the board back in November. That feedback was incorporated into this current document that is before the board tonight. What you're going to see in those metrics are metrics organized by grade band. We have included the metric, the reasoning or the rationale, if you will, and then some of the proposed data and goals around those metrics. The metrics include both quantitative and qualitative. They include standardized and local data. Or another way of thinking about that is from satellite data all the way down to street data. All data will be disaggregated by our student groups to assess the progress of all of our learners. That will include gender, race, ethnicity. And this plan is being used as the basis for our dashboard development. That dashboard development will help meet the personalized needs of our site leaders, our program leaders, so that they can monitor in real time the progress of our learners throughout the district. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Jody to talk some more specifics about some of the metrics.
After our board discussion in November, as Dr. Smazel mentioned, we also continue to have conversations in our teaching and learning core team around the feedback as well as the plan and teaching and learning board committee meetings. And so we, in, in those conversations, we really kept an eye on our strategic vision, mission and our strat plan, our strategic plan, as well as the purpose. As Dr. Smazel went into why we are collecting the data to guide our instruction for students. Some of the key things I just want to highlight that are adds to the plan, that were not there when we first discussed it in front of the board in November. There were a couple of small additions. One was to talent development. We added a component, not only looking at attendance, but also performance in talent development. And you'll see that through each of the grade level bands. We did add a component of science at the middle school and high school level and looking at that and the data metrics that we would use to see how our students and our instruction is working there. And then there was an important component about post-secondary enrollment options currently in the plan. It talks about that under college and career readiness areas in the high school band. I did want to say that we will, right now it reflects PSEO and that will expand to include our other options as well, college in the schools, dual, dual enrollment options. So I just wanted to note that as an addition that we'll continue to, and continue to look at and encompass more components beyond PSEO. So those are the highlights I wanted to share that were additions to the plan from our first discussion. At this point, are there any questions or comments?
Questions or comments from board members? Everyone's super quiet. I have a comment and a quick question. I'm so excited about this, I could like jump through the roof. I just am super excited to get the baseline data and start tracking performance. A question I had was, that just came to me after I, we had commented on it, was how best to integrate the online program? And you don't have to answer me now, but I know we've had a couple of work sessions and such talking about how it's a unique program. And there might be unique ways that we'd be interested in measuring success, such as the number of minutes students are actually having face-to-face time with each other and stuff like that. So it's just a thought I have, because it's not really represented in here and maybe that's for a second iteration of it. I really want to get it passed and start utilizing it. But I would also, it's a wonderment I have, Randy's word about wonderment. A wonderment I have about, should we have some unique measures for that specific program to make sure our students are successful in that unique environment?
I, I'd love to comment that it's a great wonderment and definitely something we can, we'll work on incorporating. And that we will be very conscious of including EVP in a lot of the, the metrics here that we've worked hard this year to see how assessment works within the virtual pathway. So absolute.
And a lot of them will be similar from like, we want to have the same academic.
Yeah.
Measurements, but then some are going to just be a little tweaked for that.
There are.
Environment.
Definitely.
So that was my only.
Good for us to think about.
Questions slash comments. So, but I appreciate all the work on this. I'm so excited. So, okay, I think that's all. We already did a motion. Okay.
Chair Allenberg.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. I just have a clarification. So once we, once this passes tonight, then what is I just have a clarify, so once this passes tonight, then what is the next time that this comes before us with some data?
I was wondering, I couldn't tell if you were looking for something, Chair Allenberg.
Oh, I'm sorry, no.
So, the, what will happen is immediately, Greg's going to get to work, and he has a lot of data to pull, to give at our baseline data so that we can set some goals, some goals that are based on, you know, that are data-driven, that are smart goals that we can set for ourselves. Typically, in the fall, we come with the World's Best Workforce Plan, which includes data. I envision that our World's Best Workforce Goals are now encompassed in the data metric plan. And so we would include that during that presentation. So in the fall, you would, which is November-ish, you know, the second meeting in November, you would be able to get a look at the performance of students in all of these different metric areas. What I really appreciate is that our plan focuses on, our strategic plan focuses on the whole student. And this data metrics plan is going to allow us to focus on the whole student. And so I'm really excited about it as well. So it will be in the fall.
Is that when some of these goals will be set? I've got to see spring data used to establish 22, 23 goals.
We will start working on that right away so that we can set these goals this spring so that we have something to monitor for next year.
I'm excited to see that.
Thanks.
We will now vote to approve the data metrics plan. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The data metrics plan is approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to approve the proposal to include additional special education classroom space at Concord Elementary School?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have Director Jorgensen here to talk about this.
Hello, Director Jorgensen.
Board members, Superintendent Stanley. It's nice to be talking about something other than COVID. So let's talk about special education just a little bit, as I included in my packet. What we've seen over the past five years in special education is, is pretty dramatic growth in terms of the number of students that we're identifying in special education. And it's happening at every single level. So if you actually take a look at the metric that I put into the board report, we've seen increases in early childhood. We've seen increases at our elementaries, at our middle schools, and our high schools. Just one thing I like to point out is that that increase in the middle schools continued to take place even after we made the transition of the ninth grade over to the high school. And so there wasn't even a blip there. We filled those spaces up just as quickly as we opened them up. And so we're seeing a large number of students in special education being identified within our district, but also moving into our district. As we've talked about, there is a, we've got a significant open enrollment population that comes into us that is trying to access our programming, and we welcome them with open arms. And so with that, though, becomes some additional space needs that are taking place within our schools. While our recent, more recent building projects have really been able to meet the vast majority of those growth needs that we have in special education, there are an increase, there is an increase in the number of students that are accessing our services with higher, more specific needs in the area of special education. These students come in with specific needs that require specially-designed space in order to serve them appropriately. And so as we've taken a look over the past year, and actually the last two or three years, we've actually seen an increase in the number of our students that would require what we call site-based services, which is they have over 60% of their day spent in a specialized instructional space. We've run out of that space within the district. For us to be able to serve appropriately, we will need to increase space. We're serving in some less-than-optimal spaces this year because of the need that is out there right now. With the current building project going on at Countryside with the, with the addition of the multilingual program that is going to address some of the space, but we also need additional space. And so that's what this proposal is about, is about trying to tack on some additional space out of Concord Elementary School to address the space need. And so we, I'm asking that we attach this building project to the existing building project out at Countryside so that we can get that all put into one levy application.
Questions or comments from board members?
Nope, the only thing I'll say is, thank you so much, Director Jorgensen. We had seen a pretty in-depth, I had a pretty in-depth conversation and discussion about this before. So I just appreciate the work that's being done, because I think it'll benefit our students at Concord. So, thank you.
Okay, we will now vote to approve the proposal to include additional special education space at Concord Elementary School. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The proposal is approved.
Yes.
Great. We will now move to board leadership and committee updates. The only update I have is I wanted to make sure people in the community noticed that in our consent agenda, we had to change the dates of three of our board meetings coming up. So instead of having a board meeting on the 22nd of February, it's now going to be on the 24th. And then we had a board meeting on the 15th of March, it's now going to be on the 14th. And then we were supposed to have a board meeting on the 19th, and it will now be on the 18th. And all those will be reflected on the board calendar, but I just wanted to give everyone a heads-up that we did change three upcoming board meetings. Dr. Stanley, did you have any? Oh, I'm sorry, are there committee updates from anybody?
Yes. I just wanted to give a quick update on the Legislative Action Committee. There was information sent to board members, but just an update. The platform of priorities, since it was approved, we were successful in having a pre-legislative meeting before the session started with State Representatives Heather Edelson and Steve Elkins and Senator Melissa Franzen. And we are so grateful that they attended. We had a great conversation. Were able to share kind of the highlights of our, of our platform and just had a really good discussion about a lot of movement that they believe they'll be seeing at the state during this session. And then there's just ongoing LAC efforts. So if anyone has any questions.
For Dan or I? Great. Thank you, Director Green and Director Aaron for putting that on, I appreciate it.
Yep, we'll keep, we'll keep at it. Thank you.
Absolutely. Anyone else, then Superintendent Stanley, I'll turn it back over to you.
Okay, well, I'm really excited to share in my update some staff commendations. So it's really great, I have a few of them. And first of all, I'd like to recognize Melody Snyder, who became nationally board certified in December, joining the 24 other nationally board certified teachers in Edina. Melody is a band teacher at Valley View Middle School, so congratulations to Melody. Absolutely. And now I would like to read a message that came from a parent regarding Lisa Burnham, one of our counselors at the high school. The parent said, "I'm sending this note to recognize the outstanding work of Lisa Burnham, an Edina High School counselor. Lisa continues to be an excellent resource for both students and parents. During this very busy time of registration, she has been so responsive and timely. She literally responds to an email within one to two hours. It makes all the difference and has allowed real-time feedback for my son, who needed to make several adjustments to his senior schedule. She provided advice for my specific student and shared links and resources to the summer programs through Northern Star that we would need to meet all his requirements. I also needed to ask her a question about a class for my incoming ninth grader, who she will serve in 10th grade, and she got right back to me on that too, even though she technically won't serve him for another one and a half years. Right now is a busy and stressful time for everyone, especially counselors, and I just wanted you to know that EHS Counselor Lisa Burnham is crushing it. Congratulations and thank you for your service, Lisa." This is about a first-grade teacher at Creek Valley. I want to say how glad we are to have Beth Dahlin, Dahleen? Dahleen, thank you. Beth Dahlin as our son's first-grade teacher. It's been a difficult transition to a new school for him, and we couldn't be more pleased with her effort and patience with him. We are so happy with his progress. Thank you so much, Beth, and congratulations. And then, last but not least, I would like to recognize our Director of Special Services, Jeff Jorgensen, for his recent Administrator of the Year Award
What?
Given by the Minnesota School Psychologists Association at their recent mid-winter conference. This award is designed to identify and recognize principals, supervisors, directors, and other administrators who support the field of school psychology. We are proud of the work Director Jorgensen does in our district every day, and for the passion and dedication he brings to helping each and every Edina student discover their possibilities and thrive. Thank you so much, Jeff. Those are my announcements.
Amazing, Jeff. Well, with that great news, we will adjourn the meeting. Thank you.